One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda that's presented. Does anybody have any additions, corrections, or?
I think we were talking about adding that one item.
Oh, yes, we're gonna add, under miscellaneous, the approval of, of.
Adam Bristol.
Adam Bristol to the park.
Let's add that to thirteen general.
Yeah. Okay. So C, approval, okay. All right. So with that, I would take a motion to approve the regular agenda now as presented.
So move.
I'll second.
It's been a motion by Rick, seconded by Maggie, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, the next item up is the consent agenda. Is there any questions on that, otherwise I take a motion to approve?
I just have a question on item D. I just wanna just get a little bit more information on it. I noticed on the application or in the original agenda, it said New Prague Gold Club, not Golf Club. So I see that that's been corrected now, it looks like. Do we make the motion first to approve the rest, and then I can ask that question on that? Or can I just ask a question now?
If you're just asking a question, I would say just go ahead and ask the question.
Yeah.
So I just wanna know a little bit more about the group. And then since that is a city-owned facility, if there's any instance that perhaps, you know, if there's any shortages or any type of pull tab theft, I know the state really gets involved if there'd be any liability on the city's behalf, or if it all falls completely on the, the group that's running the pull tabs. Because I, at one point, I thought that there could be. The establishment has some liability too, if it were the, a city employee perhaps that was counting out the pull tab tickets and whatnot, and then somehow there was missing money, or. I just wanna know a little bit more about where the city's liability lies with us hosting the group. I'm all for the group and whatnot. I, I would like to know a little bit more about it, you know, what, what they do, because I've never really heard of it before, but I was more concerned about the liability. I don't know if we can answer any of those questions.
Yeah. So admittedly, I, I didn't do a deep dive on exactly what, what the group does. And it's certainly something I can look up and we can bring back to you, since the event isn't until August. If that's something you wanna learn before we get into it a little bit.
Yeah, and I, I'm not trying to imply that there's anything.
No, no, not at all.
Yeah, I, I just really more worried about the city liability, and if there are missing funds, and, and if a, a city employee that's, would be the one that's actually counting out the money, balancing the, the money at the end of the night, putting it in the safe.
Or if it's gonna be these people.
Or if Pete, pull tabs are missing, and there's shortages, I just don't want the golf club to be liable in any way for, for that money. I know it's happened in other bars around town.
Cause this is just a one-time thing, right?
Correct.
Oh, it is a one-time, just one-time. That, that makes me feel even a little bit better too. I thought maybe this was gonna be ongoing, I'm sorry, I should've. Okay.
So it'd be, I suppose it'd be like any other fundraiser, the church or anything, when they, you know, they're, they're gonna be the ones responsible at selling it and.
So they're not gonna have boxes behind there that, the bartenders?
Correct, not that I'm aware of, correct.
Okay, all right.
I'm assuming they're leasing the golf course facility.
For some, for something, yeah.
It's not a golf course activity.
It isn't, okay. Then maybe we don't even need to go that far. I, I was thinking it might be something completely different, like an ongoing.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, it's an event they're holding at the golf course, similar to Rotary Holding.
So they'll have their own people there that'll be completely in charge of that. There'll be no city staff handing out or selling the tickets.
As far as I'm aware, correct.
Okay, all right.
So do you wanna pull it?
Yeah, well, I'll pull that then. With that being said, let's, since it's a one-time thing and.
When you say pull it, you mean take it off the agenda?
No, 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 I mean, let's, let's move forward with it.
Okay, I, I will still check on the liability question for you though, and get that back to you guys.
Okay, I, I feel a lot more better knowing a little bit more about it now, so, okay, all right. So I'll, I'll make, I'll make the motion that I withdraw my motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
Second.
I'll second.
Maggie seconds it. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, the next item up is item four, which the public is invited to be heard on matters not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Does anybody wanna address the council that's here? Other than being on the agenda like you folks, you know.
Is there anyone online?
Nope, all right. We'll move on to item number six, small area plan presentation, Mike Lamb and MSA.
Let's mention I put a part point. Good evening. You, um, do you wanna set this up, or you want me to just dive in? Go ahead. Oh, really? Wow, okay. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Mike Lamb with the MSA Small Area Planning Team. With me is Claire Stickler. Um, and we wanna give you a, kind of a, an update, and sort of where we are in the process, and with the product. We've got some preliminary information. I, I think as far as the small area plan goes, we're at a, we're at a good, uh, jumping off spot. So we wanna share that with you tonight. We're still working on some of the more, some of the other details that are required in scope work. And we've just resolved a lot of these things last week, so we're, we scrambled to kinda get this together for you tonight. So, let's go to the next slide. And again, we've had a stakeholder group, including the mayor, who had been very instrumental in helping us get through this process. It's a group that's also working on the comprehensive plan update. And so this, technically, the small area plan that we're talking about tonight will be a supplement or amendment, or an addition to the, the comprehensive plan update. So that's for the official land use guiding policy for the city. As far as the schedule goes, we, we dove into this late January with a kickoff of staff, and have gone through a series of meetings with our stakeholder group. That's, the schedule got truncated a little bit, based on where and when we wanted to do a public open house, which we did in May, and I'll give you a little update on that. And then, um, we're here tonight, the fifteenth, to kind of hand this over, hand this over to you as far as where we are with this process. I think Ken and staff are, have some additional steps afterwards, after tonight. The scope itself, again, we've gone through and checked off just about all of these specific items. We're still working on an estimated budget and a preliminary grading plan, and that will be shared with you in the coming weeks. So that's kinda where we're with scope and schedule. So what's next? Some of the uses that we considered for this site, and I think we talked a little bit about this last time when I was here, to give you an update. Obviously, stormwater management's a big part of this small area plan, and how it has an impact and, uh, an influence, not only on the, on the site itself, but also a larger area. There's a, about a fifty-five acre sub watershed that this connects to. So, uh, part of this small area plan is to address how that works in sort of a more comprehensive way, connected way. The outdoor performance stage was another thing that I think you gave some specific direction on as far as land uses in, uh, on this site. But we're also looking at residential, some passive and active park and recreation-type uses, some supportive or parking supply, which we'll talk about that in just a minute in detail. And also, the opportunities or the identification of some private opportunity, private development opportunities as well on Main Street. So, um, that's kind of where we are with that. Uh, I know we talked a little bit about with the stakeholder group. Other things like, uh, opportunities for art, food trucks, farmer's market, those kinds of things, and the plan does address, and we'll see, does address that as well. Okay, let's go to the next one. So the, the development program we're working with, it deals with the outdoor performance stage, with at least a capacity for five hundred people. Stormwater management area, and then some of the land use I was just talking about in terms of sites and lots on Main Street and on Second Street North, is it Northwest, Northeast?
Northwest, Second Avenue.
Yeah, Second Avenue Northwest. So, uh, just quickly to give you an update where we were, have been with this. We initially started looking at the site and the area on March sixth. We shared five different scenarios with the stakeholder group, and we were able to pare those down, working with the stakeholder group, to three scenarios in April. And those were further revised into two draft scenarios, which we had names for. That addressed a lot of these different uses that the stakeholder group and, and the folks had talked about. Those were the two, uh, those were the two options that we shared at the open house on May sixth, eighth. Eighth, May eighth at the Bros. It was pretty well attended, we had some great conversations. I think we also had some online and email responses as well. And then here's just a little summary of that. I think you're probably looking at this, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, and, oh, it's on the TV in front too.
No, no, we don't have that.
Oh, you don't have it, you're just looking at it here.
We're looking at this, yes.
So, so, um, you know, we looked at, uh, and, and got some specific written comments from folks that were participating. So they gave us some specific responses. There was some, um, some favorite things about the farmer's market space, the skinny street, which we'll, we'll look at in a minute, room for parking, um, the storm pond, those kinds of things. I think there was some, um, not necessarily hesitation, but just some concern about how the site might be developed on a residential or a, a development standpoint on the north side. So we incorporated that as well. So that's May open ha, uh, May eighth open house summary. But, okay, so, again, just to, let me reinforce that the focus of this small area plan was really to look at a little bit larger area than the site itself. The site itself is about four and a half, between four point four and four point five acres. But it also includes the north half and south half of the Main Street, which includes the old mill, and some of the surrounding areas. And it will become an official part of the comprehensive plan, and it'll be incorporated into the land use plan, right? And you can see here, the proposed land use map itself, most of this land is guided for park and open space. Now, that will, would include some of the public utility, like the stormwater pond, the POPS, uh, stage and se, seating area, and those kinds of things. Uh, and then commercial retail along Main Street. We've carved out a parcel on the mill site that we think could possibly be im, implemented in an incremental way. And then there's obviously a vacant lot to the west of Bowling Alley that could, that they own, that could potentially be developed as well. And then the, there's a small part of the northwest corner of the site that we've looked at as medium-density residential, and how that responds to the marketplace is still to be decided, obviously. So, but that, that will be the guiding of the official land use policy that will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan that you guys will probably vote on in the next few months, or a couple of months, whatever, stuff like that. So that, you'll come, you'll see that coming back. Existing conditions on the zoning side, in the north half of this site is zoned for medium-density residential. The south side is central business district. The one caveat here that I'm calling out is light industrial. That part of the mill, uh, the mill site could be more of a commercial use, we think. So if we need to rezone that, that might be something to consider. Obviously, uh, the, the owners themselves would have to be involved with that, if they wanted that to happen. So, next. So let's talk a little about the site features in general, the city block. In the northwest corner, you're seeing a multifamily residential building. And we purposely, uh, were able to cite that to the northwest, so we can still leave part of the park open to the street and to the neighborhood. So there's views and connections there. We're including in this larger plan, and just keep in mind, this is sort of an idealized s, uh, site plan. How this all comes to, to, to be implemented will take time. Some of it will be reflective of market conditions. Obviously, the POPS folks are excited about getting going on, on the stage. So obviously, it'll be implemented in phases over time. But there's also a community room we talked about with the stakeholder group, a multi-use plaza, which could be used for the farmer's market, food trucks, any of those kinds of s, uh, community or cultural activities. The stage and the outdoor seating area itself, um, an entry plaza into the stage and POPS area, as well as, um, the stormwater pond itself, uh, which includes, um, about an acre of land. And I'll talk a little bit more about in detail about that functional use of the storm pond in just a minute. And then overflow parking, if needed, we're, I, I think in terms of implementation, I don't think phase one, we need to build any parking. And that's based on interviews with the POPS folks, and understanding their sort of functional uses, and how that performance venue works. Folks find places to park and they don't. So I don't think we need necessarily tomorrow, build parking for this. And also, a potential overflow site as well for stormwater management as well. So, let's go to the next one. Just real quickly, in terms of numbers, uh, residential block up there, or lot, uh, at the northwest side in the yellow is about one point two acres. That includes some surface parking on the north part of that lot that you guys bought not too long ago. Stormwater areas in blue, outdoor stages in pink. The rest of this area is park and open space, so that's about an acre and a half. So that's a nice little chunk in the middle of the city. Uh, there's a potential for stormwater overflow, overflow parking, and then the commercial retail lot on Main Street, which is about fourteen thousand square feet. So that's sort of by the numbers. And I think you have a summary handout of this as well.
Yeah, that was in the bag of the summary.
That was, yeah, okay. So let's go to the next one, Ken. Buildings on the site, multifamily residential, um, up in the northwest corner, community room, outdoor stage, um, and a potential commercial infill, uh, opportunity on Main Street next to the bowling alley. I just dropped in regulation hockey rink, some, we had some discussions about, could this pond also be flooded as a rink in the winter? And, you know, it's probably would lend itself to that if it's, um, if it's holding water, and we're still not sure how much water it would hold, but that's the potential for that outline. Okay, next. The blue-green layer, uh, and again, this is a highly technical term, blue and green. Thank you. So as far as, preliminary engineering work on the, that MSA has done so far, the area in the red dash is approximately the area we need to treat onsite stormwater, if it applies, it's, the impervious is over, over an acre, so I, we may have to deal with that. But there, it's a, it's a smaller portion of the entire pond. So the rest of that pond, not in the red dashed area, could be used for upstream management. Okay, so there, we, we're still working out the exact, um, quantities and performance areas. And then the dash blue line is a potential overflow pond as well, if we need to put it into, um, action. That could, that could convey via a, an overflow trench, or maybe even a pipe, but careful not to build anything over the sanitary sewer there. It's other components of the blue-green layer, playground, the multi-use plaza, which, um, is gritted out in ten-foot squares. So thinking about farmer's markets, or even, um, art vendors who use those sort of ten-foot, canopies could organize in there, and you could probably get about eight or ten parking spaces as well, and like, in different times of the day. The skinny street, which we're showing as, uh, um, providing on-street diagonal parking right at the park, um, and then a boulevard, planted boulevard in the middle of that, of that street. There's also potential for art and sculpture walk, so that's just shown on these red dots. I mean, that's again, it's a, it's a desired feature, it's not necessarily something we're gonna build tomorrow. And then the entry plaza, which connects down to Main Street, which again helps, um, I, we assume there'd be a lot of parking on Main Street, or, or, um, near the site. So the idea that that's a gathering place as well, so, next. Sidewalks and parking, um, uh, the brown line basically indicates, uh, at this point, the potential for sidewalk and path connections around the east side of the pond. Diagonal on-street spaces, about sixty spaces, uh, on, um, Second Street Northwest. And then, um, alley loaded, another potential thirty-four spaces off the alley. So that with the plaza parking, it's over, potentially over a hundred spaces, that we're not saying gets developed tomorrow, or whatever, but there's the potential for that kind of supply. And if we need more, there's an area designated as an overflow that could be just like a grass lot, you know, you're parking for the fair, or whatever, and you pull off into that. There's some private off-street parking associated with the, the residential building, the multifamily building, and with the private lot there on Main Street. So, that's walks and parking, okay, what's next? Performance stage and seating. One of the things the POPS committee has done is they sent out an, um, a survey to other communities that have, uh, outdoor performance stages and amphitheaters, and they got some good responses, they shared those with us, it was very helpful. We went, we looked at two or three of those different, uh, stages. Typically, a hundred twenty feet from the front of the stage to the back is, is pretty common. So here, we're looking at, uh, the main seating area, um, that would have, that would accommodate about seven hundred and twenty, uh, attendees in that darker green square there. And then the bright green is kind of overflow areas. And then if you think about future expansion, we pushed the stage and the seating area further north into the site. So we've got some flexibility south of the stage to accommodate even more, uh, uh, seating or other types of uses, if we need to expand as far as that goes. So with about, and the stage dimensions, they gave us those, they just, uh, they just issued RFP. I think they're trying to select a design, a design architect for the stage now, this week. And, um, they ended up with a stage dimension about forty to forty feet by fifty feet, including a couple of, um, a dressing room and a, a storage space, and we're showing that as well. So next, let's go to the next one. So here's some outdoor stage comparisons we looked at. Rosemont, a hundred sixteen feet from the back of the seating area to the front of the stage. Eden Prairie, a hundred nine feet. And then Buffalo, which they seem to like a lot, a hundred twenty-five feet. So, again, we're, we're in that sort of a hundred and twenty-foot dimension as far as the seating. Here he goes, next. Couple of things we looked at, and this is something that you, you will probably hear and discuss again in the future, is orientation of the stage itself. The preference for the POPS folks was a northeast or southeast orientation. I think right now, they look northeast from the Bros site, right, something like that, east or, north or northeast. So we looked at, we modeled a couple of sun angle, um, perspectives based on last Thursday at three forty-seven, so you can see the sun. The blue line is the angle of the stage as we have it laid out today. And you can see where the sun's, you know, it's sort of a neutral situation at three forty-seven. If we go to the next one, Ken. At sunset, eight fifty-nine last Thursday, the audience is probably gonna get some, you know, exposure to the sun, uh, to a certain extent. So where that stage actually ends up being located, and what its angle is, may have a, may be important to discuss with POPS and with the park board. I know you talked to the park board last week, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, just, that's for, um, just for your information for tonight. Okay, next. And then potential phase one, obviously, the stay, the outdoor performance stage area, and then the stormwater treatment area. Just talking to Ken before the meeting, obviously, um, the stage could be built before the stormwater, um, pond is built. Are there advantages to doing them both at the same time, as far as grading goes? Maybe, uh, probably, uh, and there may be some soil mitigation or, or soil measures that may have to be taken as well for some of this, but. But that's the, that's the idea of a potential phase one, is like, here it is, you know. The street would be something different, that the parcel carved out in the northwest would have to be, uh, set aside or u, used as an RFP for a developer, dot, dot, dot. So, let's go next. So just, the next three images are just character images of what some of these buildings could look like. This is the community room, which we're referring to as a, having the praha porch, which could be in a before and after activity place, associated with the plaza and with the event center. Next. This is sort of looking from Main Street, a way to mark the corner in terms of, this is where the amphitheater or the outdoor stage is, and highlighting some of that ground plane transition with colors and patterns. And then lastly, um, the idea of developing a residential building that would have, I think we wanna incorporate some specific guidelines about gables, porches to the street, elements that help break down the scale and the character of this building that, um, would fit more, um, uh, fit a little bit better into the neighborhood character and scale as well. The nice thing about the site is, um, Second Avenue Northwest, I mean, I will never get that right. You, you, the, the elevation keeps going up. So the folks that sit up on the other side of that street, you know, they'll kind of look over this to a certain extent. But the idea, I think it would be important to have something that's a little more residential scale, even though it could be a multifamily building. And with that, we'll stop, I, actually, we won't stop. I'll just let Claire give you a little update on where we are with engineering and cost.
Yes, so, um, we're working on getting those. We've had the preliminary review of, you know, is the size likely gonna work with the amount of impervious surface going? Those calculations have been completed, so right now, our engineering team's working on getting those planning level cost estimates put together, hopefully for your next council meeting, so that it can give you more numbers to chew on with this process. But, uh, this is a lot of information today, so, uh, we figured, think about this concept a little bit here, and then we'll come forward with some more of those hard numbers, um, at a future meeting.
Is, is the, the slide presentation in, in here someplace?
I did not include it, so you guys would focus on the presentation.
No, I, no, I understand that. Okay, you'll send that out, because.
We'll probably put it on the website too, because we have a lot of interest from, um, neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yep, and the park board as well wanted to see it.
Yeah, so I just, we need to go back to that and show it, sure.
A lot of the slides were in what was.
Yes, yes.
All at point slides that were.
But I think, you know, sometimes people like those concept looks and stuff like that, or if you can.
Yeah, we can put a large version of just the, um, the site concept too, as a separate file, 'cause that's prob, that's what people probably really wanna look at.
Yeah.
We can put that on.
You know, with the parking and the, the, 'cause that's the questions we get, or I get. Well, where are people gonna park and handicap? Like, I noticed, um, Buffalo had a nice cement slab in front for, it appeared to be handicap, um, uh.
Accessible.
Accessibility, yes.
And I think that was some of the idea with the multi-use plaza, right?
Yeah, so the, yeah, the idea as far as accessibility, we were thinking this is an ad grade with, um, street, you know. A sort of zero elevation plaza that would also make its, make a connection, a similar elevation connection here in front of the stage, so there would be opportunity for accessibility.
Okay. Have we done an environmental impact study yet on it?
We have not done an environmental impact study at this point, I don't know. When, when we bought the property, we had, um, environmental site assessment, uh, one done, um, and that was for the property that basically was the old creamery. Um, that did not identify anything of significant note. Um, obviously, we probably wouldn't have bought the property at that time. So that's the level of what we've done, and we've had soil borings done that date back a number of years that show varying levels of buried debris, I guess is the best way to put that. And as, uh, Mr. Lamb indicated, there would be likely some indication needed for that, depending on, certainly where trees have to be planted, you'd have to, obviously, you can't just plant them on gravel and throw some black dirt on top. But as far as buildings and that, yeah, that has to be looked at by a, an engineer to make sure, is it suitable for construction? Those are details we don't have as part of this scope of the project, um, but.
And that bill, that bill would be ours, not POPS, right?
Well, that's part of the discussion.
We don't know, yeah. Thank you.
Just to add to that, there, yeah, there was a, there were two soil boring investigations on the site. The most recent one by Braun Intertech. So we basically worked from the information on, on those, um, uh, there really weren't phase one, there was just soil. There really weren't phase one, that was just a soil boring test, wasn't it?
That was, we did have a phase one.
Did have a phase one, yeah, then geotechnical report, yeah. So whatever, and again, so the notion of where the worst soils are, we're staying away from building foundations. So the further north you go on this site, the better you're going to be in terms of building foundations. And otherwise, it's fairly light structures across the rest of the site. But we, there was, there is some environmental and geotechnical information that we did rely on as we went through this.
I have a few questions. And just, you answered this question, but I just want to make sure that I have this clear. The report was to determine if the POPS facility can be located on the properties, the first redevelopment project in the city center area, and then allowing for pond, future buildings and parking to be constructed over time until the area has been fully developed. So I understand your report is saying that yes, that can be the first project development and other things can be done later. Correct?
Correct, yes.
And then the multifamily square footage and just trying to understand the stormwater. And I guess I didn't originally think of this as being two ponds. Is that, that's what's shown, two different ponds?
We're, we're showing one pond. That's one connected pond, but we just tried to render it so that, so you'd understand that we don't need that entire size of a pond to address just the onsite impervious.
Okay.
Okay.
Then the multifamily residential and some of the other buildings are basically for illustrative purposes. They're not, we're not committing to anything here. But, but to understand, or for me to help me understand, the size of that multifamily that's shown there, the stormwater area, imagine there's a correlation there. Is it a direct correlation? So if you increase the square footage of that building, the stormwater is going to change in some correlation, correlation of some size? Or if you double the amount of square footage on the family residential, is that stormwater going to stay the same size? Or help me understand how or if there would be any need for this concept to change.
And that's sort of, the answer is a little bit art and a little bit science. As far, so what we, we assumed going in, one of the assumptions we made was, yeah, we need to address stormwater management on the site. We didn't really know exactly how much. We knew we couldn't treat the entire fifty-five acre watershed, sub watershed. And we also knew we had other uses that required X amount of square footage on the site itself. So even when you look at the quantities that we've reduced to, there's still some flexibility here. Do we, could, could we possibly make the pond larger if we needed it? Or could we add another building if we needed to? I think the answer to both of those is yes, but it, it's not really a linear, linear equation. It's sort of like, okay, here's what we've got today. I think today we've got about seventy-five thousand square feet of impervious cover on the site. So that's roughly an acre and a half, maybe. And if we added to that, the dynamics of the pond might change, but I think the size right now still would accommodate an increase in impervious surface. But again, it's, there's sort of a, the science part of this answer is, you know, we still have to kind of rely on the engineering study and as well as the city city engineer to understand what's the next step and how do we really define that from an engineering standpoint? So I, hopefully that answers a little bit of your question.
I think it does answer a little bit of the question, but I was kind of looking for if you increase the size of the residential a third, would you have to change the size? Or do you have any kind of feel for?
Well, okay, so back to, back to the blue-green layer. This, this would treat the existing or the proposed impervious. So if the proposed impervious expanded, this probably, yes, would expand. So all we're doing is treating onsite runoff and having less performance for the upstream sub watershed, if that makes sense.
The upstream.
Yeah, I'm trying to hide on that.
To me, the overflow or the more would be to take in those hundred-year greens and stuff like that, correct?
Yeah, I think the, the notion that at least this much and maybe even a smaller increment could handle what's coming, you know, out of this pipe here. This is a fifteen-inch pipe, that's a forty-eight-inch pipe. So the idea that we've got additional capacity on the site that we don't have today. So depending on what, how this site actually gets developed and what this requirement is, yeah, that's, there's certainly some change there, but there's also flexibility, I think, in the plan to accommodate more impervious surface if we needed it.
I'm just trying to think ahead. If the POPS facility is built and then two years later, we have a private investor or, or the, or we decide to build a building that's bigger than what's there, are we running, going to run into a problem with the sizing of that stormwater area?
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't think so i- is my sort of educated guess on that. But we also don't want to dedicate a lot of the site to some uses that we may or may not. So we want to leave a lot, some flexibility of this site that could, that pond could increase by ten percent or.
Okay, so there's some flexibility.
There's some flexibility there for sure. Okay.
And then I know in the narrative, it's referred to as a whole, a treatment for treatment, but this is just a whole water retention pond, right? It's not treating anything.
No, I'm, well, and treatment is a loose term in terms of just being able to handle the water that comes into it. Some of it may be retained. I think the anticipation that there would be some water retained in this pond, but primarily it's to deal with, you know, overflow, runoff overflow from the entire watershed.
It's going into that same pipe that's already there.
Yeah, there's two pipes there and, and we want to be able to provide relief for both of those.
Yeah, I think Bruce, the main, main thing is we're trying to make things better than they exist today where it's just piping right out. So you're trying to deal with the water quality issue to a degree as best you can for that existing sub watershed. And then, as Mike was saying, deal with the onsite development. You can also dig the pond deeper. You could have an underground storage tank, I guess, as it were. So I don't think we're going to have a situation where it's like, oh, we can't develop a larger building in that north end. There's ways to deal with it. Now did it cost more than another option? Certainly. But I don't think we'd be stuck where like, oh, you know, we got a developer that wanted to do, like you say, maybe another third as big of a building. I don't think we'd have an issue with that not working for stormwater. I think we can make that work, but there's a cost to it.
In my mind, am I thinking correctly that water retention, because we have forty-eight inches there, the chances of it holding water for any length of time is probably not very likely.
I think it depends on how we, how that pond is engineered to handle flows from forty-eight inch. I mean, you could be dumping right into the pond and then it could maintain a level of, of, of of capacity and then once there's inundation or.
So on purpose.
Yeah, yeah.
On purpose you would do that.
Yeah, it gets pushed out to the creek.
For the ducks or.
I see, yeah, so, yeah, so Bruce, if you go down by Settlers Park, they're down along Tenth. If you look down into the pond, there are basically what look like sewer pipes sticking up right in the middle of the pond. And those are purposely designed to allow that pond to hold water until it gets to a certain level and then it overflows. And so you could design this pond in the same way to hold water until it hits an overflow point.
Okay.
Yeah, because, I mean, if it doesn't hold water, what are we left with, you know? Is it, is it just a mud hole or, you know, do we have native plantings to, you know, kind of like what's over by?
Of course, there's one that's dry pretty much.
I see, and they, and they do design, what is known as a dry pond or a wet pond as well. So it's just how you design the pond.
Yeah, I was thinking about QuickTrip on the east side where they have that water retention with all of the native plantings that works, seems to work really well.
I think some of the sentiment here from the neighbors and even the steering committee was to have that be more of a water feature if we can design it to be that way, but also recognize we don't want it to be stagnant and smell and fill up with weeds. So there's, there's a balancing point there, I'm sure.
Claire, you mentioned the numbers. Are you, when you say numbers, are you referring to basically the grading cost?
So part of our scope included planning level cost estimates for the engineered design as well as construction and which would include, include full preliminary grading plans, yes. But there's also a preliminary grading plan that we'll be providing.
For the stormwater area.
For the stormwater improvements, yeah.
Okay, all right. And then the plaza area, I know the POPS committee was concerned about having access for people to drive in to unload and load. Is, is that in, in there or where would people drive to get to the site?
As far as, as far as providing service to the state, we're anticipating, this is basically forty-five feet deep. So it's a single loaded bay apartment, say towards the north. So any access would be driven right to the stage itself.
Okay.
So there, there should be good access for that. My understanding is POPS is, their budget is focused on the building itself and nothing else.
Right, right. And then lastly, I think, I'm not sure if I caught, you said that you didn't design it for the fifty-five acre watershed. I'm not sure what that, so are we not addressing fully what this land was purchased for?
And we've never intended to actually cover the actual rate and volume for that fifty-five area, acre area. It's really try to increase the quality of the water before it gets to the creek. That was never really a hundred percent quantified.
I thought it was the whole mill area and all the way up to the city hall, but no.
It is, it is an area that includes up to city hall here.
Okay. But anyway, it is addressing what we had originally thought it was going to, okay, thank you. Any other questions for?
Can I add just a couple of things there?
Yes.
As far as landscape and, and plantings, just a caveat about how bad the soils are in this site. And so the more landscape that we're assuming, it's probably going to be an equivalent of trying to do something with soil mitigation or soil improvements that, just keep that in mind, landscape is, that's going to, another balancing act as well. And then if you'll real quickly go to the phasing diagram, Ken?
As far as, as, yeah, as far as stormwater goes, right now, today, as far as the public purpose of the site goes, we've got this area dedicated for the, the pop stage and seating area roughly in some southeast orientation. And then some areas set aside for stormwater. And this is about, I'm thinking, one point two, one point one, one point two acres. If that needed to be larger, you know, there's, this is the only thing that's probably going to get built in the next twelve months, right? So there's, there'll always be this, I think you'll have this inherent flexibility as you go forward with this, with this site. And I think you'll continue to calibrate exactly how the site gets improved and what investments actually do happen there. So I think you've, you've got, I think there's a lot of flexibility there for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down.
Thanks, Chris. All right, so I guess one question I have is, is then will we have those numbers when we start working our budget?
Yes, as we, as we get the numbers from them, we'll certainly be able to, whether we work with our budget now or later.
Okay.
Okay. I guess that's my question. What, what, what is the purpose? I mean, what do you want to do with the numbers? What, what's, what's?
Well, I guess my hope would be.
My hope would be that we'd get the numbers and like I said, it, it, maybe not a twenty-five thing, but becomes a future planning thing or a goal of, hey, we see that we want to get this done, what is this going to take? How, how soon do we think we can do it? What would it look like to try to get to those numbers and so?
Are the numbers going to reflect the amount of grading that's going to be needed for just the POPS area?
It, it sounds like.
Separately or as an alternate?
I mean, it, it sounds like the grading will really cover the POPS area, stormwater. And I suppose the more you do at one time, you're, you're working those costs out that way, but.
I think at this time, yes, because we know those are the two phases that have to occur. That's what I think when the scope was written was intended to do, those areas for grading. And then, so that would be included in the cost estimates, but the other portions of those cost estimates, and they'll be broken out and probably provided in ranges just because it's a future project. Will include that as, and then all the other elements will be mostly just the stormwater infrastructure improvements, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if the POPS facility is built first, is the grading and improvements for the landscape, or not landscaping, but just the grading and the dirt improvements for just that area going to be separated as a number?
Yes, yep, because that will likely occur prior to the stormwater stuff. So if that's how you would like to see it, we can certainly break it out that way.
Well, at least that's an, that's an issue the city council has to think about, what you want it to be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, okay.
I have a question, Dwayne.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
May I comment?
Sure, I'll let you comment. Just state your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Liza Meyer Melkerson and I live at three oh one Second Street Northwest. So I'm a neighbor across the street from the plan. And I just wanted to share how thankful I was of the ability to come to that open house and sort of see the proposed plans. And when I had a chance to take a look at the materials that were available today, and I did get permission from my neighbor across the street, Cal, to sort of share the sentiment too, how excited we were to see some of the concerns that we had addressed. And so in particular, we were concerned that we were going to be cut off access to the, to the green space from that sort of residential development. And so to see that there was sort of, in the, at least in this version of the plan, opportunity for us as the neighborhood to, you know, access that green space. We're very excited about, very excited about POPS being there as well. But, you know, that always been the case. And then also really, really excited about seeing the considerations being made in the residential structure. At least I realize it's very preliminary and not decided and all of that. But, but just the fact that you're talking about, you know, taking our view into the consideration and, and sort of the character of the neighborhood and, and as you talked about the gables and the porches and things like that. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to share my thanks for that as a neighbor to the plan.
You're welcome. Where do you live?
I live at three oh one, so I'm, I'm second and second. Yeah, just to the west of the Bean House.
Oh, so you bought Wolf's?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, then, then, then I know. All right, thanks.
Yes, thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next item is the city, city engineer project updates. Are you going to take that, Matt, or is Chris on? Okay. There you are. But we can't hear you. Again. See your lips moving.
Because remember while through COVID, I had to go through that.
Says he's muted.
Says that you're, you're muted. No, you're, no, still can't hear you. Okay.
Oh, yeah, well.
It's a forty-two.
While I was working on that, maybe we'll have Matt kind of go forward with the update so far.
No.
Okay, just so for the weekly update or for the project updates, pretty much the twenty twenty-four project, we've had a really good week last week. We had three crews in town. They got a lot accomplished. They're starting to, well, they did the curbing and sidewalk and driveways on Lyndale Avenue North from second to fourth. on Lyndale Avenue North from second to fourth, and they're continuing south on that today. As you could tell by Main Street, kinda got muddy, kinda by your place it got muddy. I did talk to the contractor today to make sure they kinda keep up on that a little bit better.
Yeah, tell them, please, no. They did, they were back and forth with the sweeper.
Yeah, after we talked to them, they came out, so, there he is. And then I'll let, I'll let Chris cover the change order.
Okay, I'm on the phone here, so it's trying to get the greatest audio, but we'll, we'll try our best. So, on the two thousand twenty-three project, the last year's project, we did have a change order on the project to amend the, the tuminous mix from a three-quarter inch rock to a half-inch rock. Structurally, not much difference, but also just to provide a smoother surface. In the past, the city has done seal coats, which maybe would have hid that rougher surface. But now that's all gonna be exposed, the seal coats are being performed. And so, I do have a, a change order in here to make that four thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-four cents change of the contract. This is work that was completed, something that we decided in the morning of the paving to do at night and discussed it. So, I, this is just to, to, to make payment for this change.
Okay.
Is there any questions from the MS?
No, any questions for the council on that? Do you wanna, do you want us to take action on that now? Okay, so with that being said, does somebody wanna offer the?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the forty-two hundred dollar change order. Number two.
I'll second with the caveat. No, it's good, I'll second it.
Okay, there's been a motion by Sean, seconded by Rick. Any other questions or discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, go on, Chris.
Okay, and I'm not sure if you had talked about the two thousand twenty-four project yet, there are things kinda in my update. So I want to say get into that one. But I do have an, an item on the two thousand and twenty-five project, which is, the next item, I guess, would be in your agenda after the change order. So, with the project that was ordered a couple of months ago, we did not include some work that's been more recently added. This includes Lincoln Avenue northeast from Fourth Street to Fifth Street, which after further review of this project area and the entire neighborhood as a whole, determined that it would be needing improvements just as much as basically the neighboring street. It's at the same age of, same condition as sewer, water and storm utilities. And it's with this being the last of the projects in this area, major project in this area, decided to, that, that, that street should be added to the two thousand and twenty-five street utility project. And then, we have also looked at the alleys in the area, generally east of Columbus Avenue, north of Main Street, Highway nineteen. These were included in the project area previously, but due to the, due to a few commercial properties that are located on these alleys, we expect there will be an assessment required, at least for those properties. And in order to allow that assessment, we do need to order the improvement that includes those alleys. Those alleys just were not previously in the resolution. So, the purpose of this resolution we have in front of you today is to include these additional work areas, additional areas to the project and for us to include that in the feasibility report that will be presented here in about three weeks.
Have the property owners been notified that they are gonna be included?
Yeah, letters were sent out last week, and then I talked to two of them already today.
Will they have a chance to address the council if they wanted to?
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is just ordering to move forward. This isn't order the project to happen or anything. So that comes up in November, I think, Chris-ish, no, October?
Well, ordering the project pretty in September here, but yeah, well, we'll be including them in, everybody that's on these streets were included, was included in the neighborhood meeting invitation that was sent out. All the properties that above the alley were included in the initial notice that went out about two months ago. So, the only newer properties would be the ones that are on Lincoln Avenue, on that north block. Probably about six properties that aren't on the corners that would be notified that had, did not receive notification. But everybody in this project area was invited to the meeting and would be invited to a future public hearing as well.
The alley improvements, what, what is involved in that? Is that just resurfacing now, or what, what is it?
Yeah, there, there are two, the, the alley is gonna be the, the alley surfacing is gonna be the primary improvement out there. But with the resurfacing of the alleyway, this is the alley that goes around the utility building. There's a north-south stretch and a west-east portion. The, the pavement needs to be done, but also it needs some drainage improvements just to make sure that those, the pavement that we're reconstructing is going to last, that it doesn't need some, some drainage improvements to make that all work as well. So, that's, will involve some on a storm sewer and some on a curb. We're probably gonna, we're, we're right now envisioning curb along the south path, that alleyway. And that's just to kinda control water to get to, or go where you want it to go. And then, but primarily it's just the pavement, pavement project.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes to the twenty twenty-five street and utility project, which is rev, rev, resolution twenty-four dash zero seven dash one five dash zero one.
I'll second.
And may, okay, Sean made the motion, Maggie seconded it. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Does this also include the area just north of the New Prague Medical, old, new, old New Prague Medical building?
Yeah.
So. So they buy, they did their parking lot last year.
So you can melt?
And we'll go right up to it, yep.
Okay, not putting curb or anything to lock them out, or?
No, no, we're not.
The double curb.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, Chris?
Especially about just a general note, the neighborhood meeting has been scheduled for August seventh at six P M. All are invited, of course, and we have sent out letters to affected property owners in the area. We do expect two days prior to that to be the day I provide the feasibility report on the project to council. And that would be ahead of likely a public hearing on the first Monday in September. So that's about six weeks earlier than last year's project, just to kinda give us enough time, assuming the project moves toward design and construction, to, to push that forward, that project forward, get the state aid reviews and all the other stuff that is needed on this type of project. So just a general update on that, by the way, you should, you should expect to see the feasibility report at your first meeting in August, and I'll, I'll be there to present that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Chris.
Good name. All right, the next item is ordinances for introduction. And we have ordinance number three fifty for introduction. Who wants to handle that?
I'll handle that.
Okay.
I'm gonna give you the very abbreviated version of the ordinance update. So in a nutshell, last year, the council recalled that you passed a moratorium on cannabis businesses. That runs through to January one, twenty twenty-five, unless we have an ordinance in place prior to that, that would address that. We've given updates, I think, over the past few months that we were waiting for a draft ordinance from the Office of Cannabis Management in order to basically put in place zoning ordinance controls and then other city code amendments to handle cannabis businesses. While, I think it was literally within the past two weeks that that draft or template ordinance came out. We talked to the city attorney, specifically Joe Sathy from Kennedy and Graven, who Scott has as our expert in, in-house at Kennedy and Graven on this topic. And while we talked about that, when he indicated actually that they are working to revise that template that they got from the state in order to give to the clients, including New Prague, that we can bring back to you to talk about that more, and I wanna come back to that in a minute. But while talking about that, Mr. Sathy indicated that the twenty twenty-four legislative session included two changes to the cannabis laws that were on the books. And both were potentially problematic enough that he thought we should change our moratorium so that we don't have people slide under the radar for, number one, what's termed as an early cultivator, which is, you've probably heard about this, they're trying to get people basically ramping up for production and to get that going before the January one time period. And then the other one was, they changed the definition for medical cannabis within the previous law. And he felt it changed enough that our moratorium may not be interpreted to include those two items that we had intended with the original moratorium. So this introduction for the moratorium amendment would include those two items because the statute changed that, somebody had argued that they're not included. But we think we could argue otherwise, but to be safe, this ordinance, or, or ordinance for the moratorium to be amended is why we're bringing that to you tonight, to introduce it tonight, adopt it on the fifth. So that's kind of the quick and dirty on the moratorium amendment as number three fifty that we have in front of you. So I think that's pretty cut and dried, and we can, we can act on that. But before you, you act on that, Tim and I just wanted to have a little bit of discussion with you regarding the template ordinance. I don't even have a copy to share with you at this point. But in a nutshell, Mr. Sathy indicated that we should probably introduce to the council, from a staff level, your thoughts, and you don't need an answer tonight, and we'll bring more information. But is there a thought from the council that you would like to have us look into basically buffers from schools and, what was the other category?
Religious.
Religious institutions for, and daycares for, for a cannabis business. Now, this is different than like a tobacco shop downtown selling the low potency hemp edibles and things that are that lower category. This is a true cannabis shop that would just be focused on selling cannabis product at that higher potency levels. So we can put in, and I forget the exact distances, between five hundred and a thousand feet. So that was something we wanted to pose to you to think about, if you would like us to look into that more. We obviously did something similar with the firing range ordinance. Some cities do that with alcohol and even tobacco. We do not, here in New Prague currently do that. But what do you think about for a cannabis shop, if we should look into those additional setbacks from a school, daycare and religious institution? So that was kind of the big question. I don't know if I'm missing anything, Tim, from that standpoint. But, so that's obviously separate from the moratorium. But basically from now through the end of the year, we've gotta get an ordinance in place. So, while we adopt the moratorium, it already is in place, it cements it to be a little more foolproof, but we still have that January one deadline looming. So, I'm gonna get a little feedback as we actually have the draft template to work with here and can talk further with you as we go into the late summer, early fall.
Well, I do think it's important to create some buffers, especially around daycare centers and schools. You know, in, in front of some of these stores, are people gonna be able to smoke openly and, you know, have the smoke drift, you know, to unsuspecting people? I don't quite understand the religious institutions, but I'm not opposed to that either.
I believe we put into place that there can be no right-of-way smoking, correct? So for them to smoke, yeah, for them to smoke in front of the stores, there'd have to be some sort of patio in front of the store.
Okay.
But yeah, so, but whether it's in front of a daycare or church, if, if you're on a sidewalk anywhere in town that is considered public right-of-way, you would not be able to smoke.
What happens if the religious institution utilized cannabis within their worshiping? Well, no, that's probably a legitimate question.
I'll say it does. I mean, there, there are, there are different sects of various religions that do. That's, that's a solid question. And if it's something I think that we wanted to buffer from religious institutions, I don't know if we'd have to somehow work with Scott and Joe to see if we can.
You know, it'd be no different than lying. Lines allowed. They don't need a, I would suspect, something like that.
I support buffers also, and I think it's kind of expected by a lot of our residents just to have the comp, because it's fairly common in my understanding of it. I, I do wanna try to understand how that would work though for religious, because it does happen on occasion that we have religious renting conditional use on Main Street or whatever. And if we have that, does, does that buffer kind of flow with wherever that institution lands for a two-year lease or a three-year lease? Or how does that mechanically work on it then?
I would think it typically would, and we can define that, and I, I'll have to verify this. But typically, you could define that by boundary of the specific location they're in versus the larger building. Let's say if they were a tenant in there. Sometimes the buffer cities will do actually from the property line. I don't know if that would be the appropriate way to, to do that here, cuz we're talking about specifically a use within a building. So it's a good question, too. We'll have to talk through that.
So it would kind of go with whatever, if the religious was there first, then that would be in place and then be measured from there?
I believe it would, yep.
That type of thing.
We kinda had that discussion, if you remember, with the, the gun range regarding bars popping up and moving. That could preclude something, you know, in twenty twenty-four, but in twenty twenty-five, it may not exist cuz that buffer will follow that particular use that you're buffering from. We'll ver, we'll verify that.
And, and then, well, I, I'm sure they're, they're used to trying to define these things because education, I know what it, in my mind is, but other people would think of, you know, a lot of different kind of education facilities that are not necessarily K through twelve.
All right, what about homeschoolers? Co-ops, yeah.
Or like, yeah.
Yeah, and home, home daycares.
They might have a curriculum program for whatever, early childhood in a commercial building or something.
Yeah, yeah. My opinion on this whole thing is buffers are great, use them. I don't know about the religious, we'll see. The only reason I giggled about that is because they used to use it as an excuse to smoke, you know, and doing it for Jesus. But, like I say, buffers are probably good.
I just have a quick question, though, when we talk about buffers, cuz, and I was just kind of running through my head. We really don't have any public schools within the downtown. Is there gonna be anybody that's grandfathered in? Like the tobacco shops here that are already on Main Street? And they might be within a thousand feet of.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I'm obviously saying. Yeah, so there's no law right now, so they, even if they wanted to turn into a cannabis shop, they are not currently, so they would not be grandfathered.
Oh, they would not, okay, all right, great. I'm up for buffers, too.
Yeah, and them daycares, if you have, you know, those are placed all over the place, so.
Mm-hmm.
That's probably a good idea, though.
Police chief just mentioned, I forgot to mention it, there can be a number limit, similar to cities, something they can limit, basically a bar liquor licenses, so you can consider that as well. That would be the other main question, I guess, if, if you think there should be a limit. One, two, no limit? If, if, if you remember right, the potential tax kickbacks from the state will be dependent on the number in your community. So if your community has one, your tax backs, tax kickbacks from the state will be less than if your community had three or four.
But I thought that, that, that was based on population at that, so that's been.
The, the minimum you're, the minimum you're required to have is based on population. That's per county. That's per county and per city based on population. That being said, there is no max cap. If, if, if we wanted to make a brand-new city six miles that way and say we're gonna become the cannabis capital of Minnesota, we could just have thirty cannabis businesses. So, there is no max cap. Cities are allowed to do that. They're just have a required number. I believe we are required one, aren't we?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have to allow at least one, but we, we are free to set the cap above that.
Just from a competition standpoint, I'd be okay with two. But just so there isn't just one person that controls a monopoly within the city of New Prague. But as far as expanding that, I don't, you know, I think two would be more than.
Yeah, so the other things to think of, I mean, counties also have caps on them. I think if I'm right, LaSueur County has to allow at least three within the county. And so, but it's entirely possible, if, if three of them, and the city allowed it, three of them popped up on the LaSueur County side of New Prague, I mean, that could in theory, if the county wanted to shut down the rest of LaSueur County, they could. So, but yeah, we have to allow at least one, but it's up to us whether we want to put a cap and where that cap is at.
A little confused, just to make sure, I'm trying to make sure I understand. Are we talking just retail or retail and growers, or growers separate than retail? Or, because you mentioned growers, but then it seemed like we're talking about retail.
I believe this is a retail cap, correct?
So this has nothing to do with growers?
No.
And growers?
It'd be a retail cap for like a brick and mortar, strictly cannabis shop, store.
So, is it growers? So is it growers? Can we have any number of growers in New Prague?
As far as I'm aware, so I know some communities are already revising their land use codes to say. Growers are allowed in industrial districts or that sort of thing to make sure they got that covered.
So our moratorium doesn't cover growers?
It, it is right now.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, I was gonna say, and that's what, yeah, so that's what we're talking about right now. Of whether we want to include an extra moratorium on top so there can be no jumpstart growers.
Are there a lot of growers in municipalities?
There's a lot of inquiries. We've had, boy, I think probably four or five inquiries in the past, six, seven months here this year. Knowing that this early cultivator application opens up, I think on the twenty-fourth, if I remember right.
Without naming names, I've heard from my colleagues that there are communities, we'll say within forty miles of us. That seem to be having significant investment for growers potentially in town.
In town?
And you're, and you're talking commercial.
Commercial grow up. Yeah, so yeah, commercial greenhouse operations for intense growing.
And that is because the utilities are easier there, electricity?
I would assume so because they are quite water and electric intensive. And so cities would tend to pose better to have access to those resources. But I can't speak for why they're choosing some communities over others.
I'd like to go as slow and keep as much control as we have at first.
And things can always be amended and opened up.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's the big thing because I think the legislature obviously doesn't know what they're doing just between last year and this year.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, right? You start small and then you can always amend and allow more. You can never go back and say, now we're taking.
Yeah.
This number away, right? You can add more as the city progresses and if there's a need or the inquiry or you decide that. We have these regulations in, in place now, we're comfortable moving forward and we have the additional interest, we can always add, right? You can never, like, it's going to be really hard to take away if it's at all.
So what you're saying is if we say a thousand foot buffer versus a five hundred foot buffer, we'd have to go.
Yeah, even that, even the number, right? Like if you're, you're talking numbers, if you say, you say ten and it turns out that's a bad number, right? We only wanted two, how do we take those eight away? That's going to be really, really difficult to do. Whether then you start at two and work up to ten, that may be a better approach for a city of our size.
Okay, so what do you need? You need a first reading on this?
The first reading of the amendment to the moratorium tonight.
And, and any direction, I guess, on any of those different topics that can discussed if you just have thoughts on them.
Okay. Does somebody want to offer that or I can? I'll offer the first reading of ordinance number three fifty amendment in term ordinance twenty-three dash three-three-eight. Authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the operation of a cannabis business within the city of New Prague. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Rick made the second. Any other questions or discussion? I guess the only direction would be what we just kind of stated unless if anybody has.
Let me recap. I heard possibly a limit of two.
Yeah.
Businesses to start with for the retail and look at setbacks. Maybe unsure a little bit about the religious, but we'll bring that information back to review for all the categories.
Is that kind of recap everybody?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So with that, if there's no more questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right. Next is a resolution accepting the donation of batting cages at Foundry Hill Park Baseball Field. From the New Prague Baseball Booster Club.
Yeah, so the park board is forwarding a recommendation that they had from their meeting that they had last week for a donation of. From the booster club, a New Prague Booster, Baseball Booster Club, excuse me, for batting cages at the park. Actually have a error on the memo, but it's about sixteen thousand dollars in value of the batting cages for Foundry Hill Park. Be located kind of off to the first baseline outfield foul area. They would be looking for a little bit of assistance just from an equipment and, and labor standpoint to have staff drill some augured holes. And provide some other little labor support, but we think it's a great addition to the park. The park board agreed as well, and that's why we're forwarding this to you here tonight so we can get the resolution approved. And allow that project to move forward here yet this fall.
Okay. Any questions of the council? I think it's a good thing. Boy, that's a nice trunk of money, so.
So they just recently did the dugouts.
Yeah.
And that was thirty-five thousand dollars.
Just this year.
Yeah. Yeah, they finished them.
That's great.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-four dash zero seven dash one five dash zero two. Which is accepting the donation of batting cages at Foundry Hill Park Baseball Field from the New Prague Baseball Booster Club.
I'll second.
Okay, Sean made the motion, Maggie seconded it. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And a nice thank you. General business we're up to is the ARPA spending updates and requests.
Oh, yeah, so I, I put an update in your packet. I put an update in your packet kind of as to where the ARP was gone. This has been reported on every year through our audit. I kind of figured I'd throw it all into one for you. Coming into here twenty twenty-four, we had three hundred and twenty thou- little over three hundred and twenty thousand dollars left to spend. We had a hundred and thirty thousand of that that had kind of been earmarked way back in twenty-one with our initial plan to put towards. Sidewalk and trail expansion specifically down on Twelfth Avenue near Settlers Park. And then over by the industrial park for three years now, we've, two or three years, we've been applying for grants for both of those projects. And just this last year, actually within the last couple of months, we learned that we received a grant for the Twelfth Avenue project. To mostly pay for that project other than the engineering work involved with, I believe is how that went, correct? So the engineering match for that is estimated to be forty-three thousand dollars. But the grant will cover the rest of that sidewalk project for the industrial park. As those are building out, we did not entirely feel like if we wanted to build a sidewalk before all the construction happened back there. Potentially bust all the sidewalk up and have to have it fixed again. So at this point, by that estimation, it means that there's still about eighty, little over eighty-six thousand dollars of ARP spending that needs to be done. So knowing that part of the requirements for the ARP spending was that it was either spent. Or under contract to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-four. That is where in the memo I explained, we kind of went through and looked at some of the visioning stuff that we had on the twenty-five year. To potentially see if there's anywhere that we could start any of that early. When looking at it, I know for twenty twenty-four here, we did set aside forty thousand dollars to go towards. Zoning and subdivision ordinance update. Generally, this takes place after a major comprehensive plan update to ensure that your zoning ordinance. And the actual on the boots working document that'll help build stuff out matches what the plan would like. For the next ten, ten to twenty years, and so a full update on our zoning subdivision ordinance has never actually been done. It was initially put in the plan in the seventies and updates have been made piecemeal here and there as things have come up. But a full, full scope is this plan or ordinance still working for us has never actually been done. So as I said, in twenty twenty-four, we did set aside forty thousand dollars this year, which is estimated to be about half of the total project for that update. And so the plan was to levy the remaining forty thousand and twenty-five to then have the full scope to be able to move that project forward. And so as our comprehensive plan is hopefully wrapping up here within the next month or two. The thought would be, well, of this eighty-six thousand dollars, we could potentially use forty thousand of it to just kind of roll right into that zoning ordinance update. And then it would not have to then be levied for in twenty twenty-five to continue that project. So that was kind of my first thought, and I guess before moving on, I will just gauge your thoughts. One, on just the general fact that we have eighty-six thousand dollars left and two, kind of that first recommendation.
I'm happy that we have eighty-six thousand dollars left. I think this is a good discussion to have at budget time when we start seeing numbers before we commit to anything right now.
Well, and that, that was the thing being, I mean, that ARP spending generally has to either be spent or under contract to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-four.
Right, and when we start our budget stuff in August, I think that's a perfect time to take some preliminary looks and then have this money available. To see where we might, I mean, the, the zoning and subdivision ordinance update, you know, was first adopted in the seventies. I, I didn't really even aware that there's any type of issue or problem that needs to be resolved right now for forty thousand dollars. But that's just my take. I'd like to wait and take a look at all this stuff as part of our overall budget plan.
That subdivision and planning ordinance, what, what about the other ordinances in town? Parking, that type of stuff, does that take into account that?
No.
No, it doesn't.
No, city code, no, this is just specific to zoning and subdivision.
My reaction, I guess I'm comfortable in it, with it. Because that would mean forty thousand dollars that'd be coming out of what we, we would normally be levying next year, looking at it. So in a sense that helps some of our levy issue for next year based on what happened last year, so that would be positive influence. But I guess your second consideration is more, I might have a different view on, if you want to talk about that part of it. But this first part of it, I guess I'm. Comfortable with because it's, it's, it's beneficial to us in the sense it frees up our levy pressure. It's actually reducing our levy.
If we decide that we need to do it. I mean, I, I, I still don't think a case has been made that we really need to do that, at least from what I've just heard there. It doesn't seem like this is an urgent ordinance update or.
Kind of mentioned that with the new comp plan.
With the comp plan, no, I understand.
You've approved already forty thousand this year, right?
Yeah, in this year's budget.
Yes, in this year's budget, we, we put, yeah, we approved forty thousand dollars.
It's already been approved as far as doing it. You can always revisit it, I imagine.
I'm okay. I, I think, you know, there are zoning and subdivision ordinances being, you know, as old as they are. And to make sure that it supports the comp plan, I, I think it's an important thing for our city to be forward looking. Instead of relying on old zoning on the books.
Because I always think of, there's probably ordinances cited or ordinances, statute cited in that ordinance. That probably aren't. Have been repealed or been changed in some way, you know, by the legislature and. First, you know, and we could hook ourselves on something that.
When was the last comp plan done?
We did a minor update back in twenty twelve, twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
And then prior to that.
Twenty twelve and twenty fourteen?
It's be, like, over time, that was a staff in-house update, just kind of a minor update. Prior to that was a pretty major update in two thousand four, two thousand five timeframe.
Okay. And at that time, the council didn't see any reason to do a study on changing the zoning or?
I don't know if that was ever presented to us.
It was not recommended, I think mostly due to budget constraints, and we've done, I don't have a list, but I would bet there's been thirty amendments. To the zoning ordinance from probably the year two thousand through now, which is a lot. But that's been trying to, you know, piecemeal it together and keep it going. And that was one thing that MSA noted in our comp plan updates, boy, that's been amended an awful lot. So it's just, it's almost like a codification in, in a sense of like we did with the city code back in, I don't know, Duane, that was probably during your initial tenure on the council. I know Jerry Bonesock did that, but it was taking all the old ordinances and re-codifying is in a nutshell similar to that. In that you're, you're checking for statute, making sure things are up to date. And then in this case with the comp plan, you make sure that it meshes with your current goals and objectives and everything.
Well, maybe I'm just a little confused on it then because I, I guess what I want to know is that it's a good use of the forty thousand dollars. I, I haven't seen in the twelve years I've been on the council, a situation that's come up that there's been some type of problem or issue with it. I mean, yes, I granted, we have made some tweaks here and there and changed some zoning and, and whatnot. So what, what are the efficiencies that are going to happen with this forty thou- how is this going to help out with the, the big picture? I mean, that we're going to spend forty thousand dollars on this.
Big picture, easier for residents and developers to interpret it, easier for staff to interpret it. We would obviously have a more digital version. Right now it's a PDF. It is limited in its usability other than it's a digital document on the website. We would include more visuals, more tables, just make it more functionally up to date.
And I think your hope is that you reduce variances.
Yes.
Hopefully you write the code in a way that matches how the community and or city council wants it to grow. So that hopefully you have less variances involved with your overall requests, if that makes sense.
And I, yeah, and I could see where it would help developers too, you know, if they're proposing a project within the city of, you know. Truly understanding what the zoning and the ordinances are.
Some of it will come, I mean, we, we know we have MS four regulations coming down the pipe. We're inevitably going to have major code revisions that are just going to come out of that. I believe something that MS four cities are required to start looking at on every property is your impervious surface. So for example, Sean, let, I mean, I have no idea. Let's assume you don't have a shed in your backyard and you want to build one. You come into city hall to get your permit and we're going to have to ensure that if the impervious surface requirements on your lot are fifty percent. That building your shed doesn't take you over that fifty percent. That's not something we currently require because we don't have to, but just moving into this MS four. And so this would, I'm assuming we would take into account the fact that we're becoming an MS four city. And whoever we'd work with on this update would help ensure that all of our codes and regulations would also match those requirements that we know we have coming.
Okay, well, maybe I, I don't have a good grasp on it, but I don't think it's really slowed down developers. And I, I mean, we just have a hundred and sixty new houses going up that we're going to annex into the city. That there was no, that wasn't in our comp plan. I mean, that was a farm field that.
Well, it's in the comp plan.
Well, 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 some of it too, so let's say, I can't even think of any off the top of my head now, but. Our development code allows the developer to build that subdivision in a certain way. If through our comprehensive plan, let's say we learned that we'd like them to include more trails in their subdivision or more or less parks. The updated subdivision code would basically require the developer down that path in very get-go. Whereas in, right now, they're basically operating under that same code that we've, we've now had for twenty, fifty years. So it, a lot of it is updating to make sure that our code does match actually what's in our comprehensive plan. Instead of what it matched fifty-five years ago when the code was first written and the comp plan was first put out at that point.
Okay, I'll just have to take you guys' word for it, just, I want to make sure that.
To make and I think it would be difficult to not have a consultant brought on to kind of focus on that. While, you know, other projects are being moved forward, so this is like, we hope that Keyland and other projects continue to come forward. But those happen, it's very hard to dedicate time to sit down and rewrite a, you know, two hundred page zoning ordinance and a hundred page subdivision ordinance.
Okay, okay, all right.
I would love to do it, but.
No, yeah, sure.
Your last point, Josh, is a good one, just the terminology and, and the tone and flavor of your comp plan is different now. Our new one's going to be different, but our zoning still has terminology and, and tone from twenty years ago. And we're trying to project something out for twenty or thirty years from now. We're trying to project what we want two year, two miles around our town to look like. So I, I think it is good, and I know with the, the, the gun thing. You know, I spent a lot of time with the attorney trying to understand the terminology and what that meant. And our comp plan, our zoning in that case, there was some wishy-washiness, at least in my mind. And some, there's some different issues that come up if you don't have the right, if you're not using the current terms.
Well, and that's, that's the other thing I've seen out of a lot of these updates is most of these firms that do them have attorneys on staff. So they make sure they're actually getting the right languages in there, but they take what a lot of older zoning codes have a lot of legalese through them. And you kind of almost have to be an attorney to understand what you're reading, and it takes them and dumbs them down so Ken and I and anyone else can understand them, quite frankly. And so that's becoming kind of the new revolution in zoning codes is to make them more easily readable without having to have a law degree. Put a lot of pictures in them, put a lot of tables. Put a lot of pictures in them, put a lot of tables in them, something that makes them just easy to find, so. If your neighbor comes up to you and says, hey, I'd like to build a hundred or a ten by ten shed, do I need a permit? You can say, oh, that's really easy, right here on the zoning code, it says. Permits are required for a hundred and twenty square foot sheds and up type of situation.
We didn't even know what a she shed was twenty years ago.
No, you're right, or a shouse. A shouse, shop in a house.
Oh, okay.
You know?
So that was my first recommendation in here. The Bruce's point, second recommendation. I know that since I've been here just about every budget cycle, the. Kind of the schedule of how we look at the various grades for employees, how we look at steps for employees. How we look at potentially moving that for COLA. Has been discussed, some years more than others, but it seems to come up every single year. And I guess I know that the way we are doing it now was actually just recently approved in twenty twenty-one, but. I know at the end of the last budget cycle. It was asked that we talk about this early, so we can make sure that we don't feel rushed at the end. And quite honestly, we don't have anyone on staff who is an expert in compensation methods and the state laws surrounding. Local government employees and how they can or can't be compensated. And so I would guess. If we're looking to potentially deviate from that twenty twenty-one comp plan. Or compensation plan, I guess I would recommend potentially going out and doing a study to make sure that. We are honoring all the various laws for benefits and wage compensation and whatnot. I would just be nervous that if we try to do it in-house, we'd get ourselves in trouble.
Again, in which way? I mean, we have this eighty-six thousand and alls we're doing is spending on studies instead of trails or parks or. So I just, you know.
Yeah, so if you, I mean, all of these studies and plans, my thoughts are, these are generally things that are not necessarily. Building on themselves and have to be done year after year. Love trails and parks, not going to deny that. You do have to, you build a trail, you got to maintain it. You build a park, you got to maintain it, so you are creating future costs. My hopes with these three recommendations, we're looking at things that are. Potentially moving the city forward without creating a reoccurring cost on top of ourselves.
Well, I'm pretty sure the compensation study is going to.
Well, that's, that's fine, then I would just recommend, and we can talk about this at our first budget meeting, that we continue to use the compensation plan that we approved back in twenty twenty-one.
Did, so I'm curious, did we shop that around at least a little bit? I mean, we did it three years ago for eighteen grand and now it's thirty-one.
So that thirty-one was me just trying to estimate numbers in there, quite frankly, like if we decide to do it, we would put an RFP out, we'd select who we want to go with.
So it might not be thirty-one.
Correct.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, if we get to the end of this and we decide we want to move forward with one, two, three, none, assuming we move forward with any of them, it would be. Putting an RFP together and starting, just starting the process. Nothing for firms has been selected or how any of this is going to get handled.
But, but we would have it under contract if.
The idea would be to try to either get them started or have them under contract by the end of the year.
Yeah. To meet the guidelines of the money, otherwise lose it.
But I know Bruce said he had thoughts.
I guess I feel the same as I did a month or two when we discussed this last, is that I'm supportive of certainly doing it. I'm not sure. Seems like you're broadening out the definition of it when you say comp plan versus compensation study, so I'm not sure exactly what we're exactly talking about there, but.
Yeah, and that was okay, so the comp plan was the zoning ordinance thing. I kept throwing out comp plan when it should be compensation study.
Yeah. Okay, so if we're just talking about, we're just talking about a compensation study versus a review of our compensation or personnel policy then? Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, and what I've got in here would be throwing in wages, benefits and job descriptions, because I think the last time. And maybe we'd have to talk to my historian here to my. Was that my right?
Descriptions were not done in.
I know twenty-one, were they done in fourteen? Do you know? Okay.
My reaction is the same as before. I guess I'd rather stated the schedule that we had agreed upon. Earlier in, that's a five-year cycle. And I think it's probably more, I think it's better that we wait instead of doing it earlier because. The effect of. The inflation issue is still pretty ripe right now, and the goal may be achieved or may not be, and there's certainly a lot of wage changes occurring. And I just think the five-year cycle. I, as far as the council, I don't think I was one that was advocating some big hurry up, let's do something, but. So I'm more comfortable using the money for other purposes and waiting. But still doing it.
Well, I think we. Five years or whenever, whenever.
I think five years was kind of discussed because we have the, I can't recall, do we have to every year do the?
Every year we have to submit paperwork to the state regarding.
Make sure we comply.
Yeah.
What do you call that?
The quality of pay and whatnot.
But then don't we have to actually document something more every five years or something? There was something five years was.
Was it pay equity or?
Is that every year or every five years?
So I know we, we send paperwork to the state every year of like, this is what we have on staff and what, who and who.
But I think we have to, I'm not sure if we do, but.
There might be something more intensive than that, I'm not aware of.
I thought we did, that we have to do this position and this one, and how many of this is typically it's. It includes a lot more than, often in our shop, it's usually female, male. Is our test that we use.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what that, what that cycle is, that more intensive one.
But I think we have to do it, and I'm not sure if there's a hard and fast cycle, but I think, I thought five years was the magic number.
I think that's maybe. You know, a number that's, that's just picked on. I know some cities don't hold to that, and then when they do, all of a sudden. I think that's, that's just good planning for budgeting. I think some cities go longer. I think, and then all of a sudden you got major.
Right.
Major swings and, and then once the study's done, I think you almost have to comply with it, right? Yeah, so. I would kind of go with Bruce on letting it go all five years.
Well, I, from my understanding, and I've gone through it several times, is that there's, the pay equity study is. The paperwork is submitted. And then the state reviews it, and then theoretically can come back and say, you're not following this or there's a problem. And if I remember right, I'd like to see the last few times that we've done it. Because if I remember right, we were like in the eighty-six or eighty-ninth percentile, or however they broke it down, that we were well within range. We weren't even close to being. Behind on the pay equity issue. So, and I had a problem back then, a few years ago, with spending, I think at that time it was twenty thousand dollars for. For the pay equity cycle that we're required to do every so often. But it seemed like we were doing it more and more on there, but, and there had never really been a. There's never been an issue, and if there was, there is, let's be honest, there's remedies to take care of that. It's just getting them caught up. Anything that they're owed would be part of the budget process that we'd have to, to pay it out, so. Anyways, that's, that was a point that I wanted to make, I just, I'm tired of all these studies that cost tens and twenties of thousands of dollars that seem to be. There's, you know, you're operated on a what-if or a fear factor that isn't really legitimate. As far as I'm concerned, because there's, there's remedies to, if we did find that the city was out of some context on something, we could easily correct it, but. Without paying the tens of thousands of dollars for studies. Can we get, can you get us a copy or can we do a little research on, on the, the last time that we did? The, for example, the pay equity study and the comp study and. Just so we have some historical context there.
Yep, I'll make a note of it.
Thank you.
You can just put it on the shared drive if you want.
Yeah. And then, so I guess if there's, are there any other comments on that one?
No.
Final one, I, as I was thinking about the various, going through the visioning process or visioning process for twenty-five. Was to have a firm help the city go through a strategic planning process. Beyond the visioning document, this process would allow the council, department head staff, and select boards, commission members, or whoever the council wants to be involved. Participate in a visioning process. To kind of give this guidance to the city as an organization for the next three to five years. These are quite common, I guess, in a lot of cities that start getting larger than us, as well as just private organizations. That look to build a mission statement, a vision statement, goals, what do we want to do for the next three to five years? What are we actually trying to accomplish, I guess, as a city? Are we looking to expand? And then I guess in here I threw a couple, do we want to expand alternative modes of transportation? Do we want to push economic development? Is really the whole goal just to keep taxes as low as we can?
Well, some, some of this, how does it differ from our comp plan? Because I would hope that our comp plan addresses, let's say, transportation options.
So many, many times these work kind of hand in hand with the comp plan. Your comp plan tends to be very land use oriented. Strategic planning kind of, kind of looks at the broad spectrum of everything that the city as an organization deals with. Your comp plan isn't as much going to address economic development per se. Your comp plan might not address the. The financial aspects of some things that we're looking, so this would be. Trying to address the organization as a whole, or the city less as a city and more as an organization, if that makes sense.
Am I the only one that thought that our strategic planning process that we did with you when you first came on board is moving along nicely and we've, we've. Quantified quite a thirty different items.
Yep.
We are moving along on without spending fifteen thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, well, and so I guess I view that visioning process as very, very individual. These are projects that we'd like to accomplish, but I'll be honest, Sean, like if somebody asked me today and said, what is our city working for in the next five years? I don't know if I could answer them, like what do we, what do we as a city, what are we? What is a overarching goal that we as a city have that we would like to accomplish in the next three to five years?
I guess I'd like to see a RFP on that then, just. What are they going to do exactly that we can't do ourselves by getting in a room like we did the first time when you came on board two years ago? And develop a great list, and you've been giving us updates every, at least twice a year, if not three times.
Yeah, so.
And it seems like we're making progress on that.
I, I think you, and I'm not saying it.
What's a private firm?
I'm not saying it costs fifteen thousand dollars, but you're basically bringing in someone who's. Good at facilitating and asking the right questions to say. Yes, I think we, I think building, building out the sidewalk over by Settlers Park is a good goal. But is that, is that, is that an overall vision that, like, I wouldn't necessarily consider that to be a. Driver of the city is trying to build out a particular sidewalk, or maybe we'd come up with a bunch of stuff. We want to build more sidewalks, we want to put some extra money in economic development, and we want to try to keep, keep taxes as low as possible. And let's just say we had like eight things, eight, nine things. Professional facilitator may look at that and go, that might be too many things. We need to try to narrow this down to maybe four focused items, and then we can develop. Goals underneath those items and working who's responsible for these various things, and so. I do, I do think our visioning document is a start in that direction. I just know that there are people who. Who do this for a living that are much better at pulling out the questions of developing these documents, goals to work towards, and it's. Just, just trying to. Trying to advance this and get this so that we could say, yes, like, these are the three things that we as a city are proud and we are trying to get to. And these are, and maybe through that process, we discover half of our visioning list doesn't actually meet the priorities that we have as a city, once we flush some of that out, and it kind of helps put those projects together as well.
Well, that's a good point that you brought up settlers, because I could tell you I'd rather spend eighty-six thousand dollars and clean up the eyesore that we created by tearing down all those bad trees and whatnot.
I will say, Sean, we are working on that, I mean, it doesn't.
Well, how many trees does eighty-six thousand dollars buy? And what could we do with that area so it isn't a two-year project? And alleviate some of that upsetness that's.
I mean, it has to kind of be a two-year project, because we have a lot of invasive, invasive or non-native stuff that we didn't want there. We got to get rid of it, because you go plant trees out there right now. And those other things are just going to override those trees that we put in the ground, and so that's why it doesn't look great right now.
But what could eighty-six thousand dollars do to speed that along? I'm just, I'm just throwing it out. I, you know, you brought up settlers with, with that, and I just know there's. A hundred some homeowners around that that have to look at it every day and are very upset. Rightly so, and even probably another two hundred homeowners that drive by it on a regular basis that just look and go, ugh, you know.
And if you give it a.
And I understand that we had to do it.
You give it, give it a couple of years and it'll, it'll look great. We just got to get there. The process, killing off vegetation isn't always a fast process, because there's a lot of seeds in the ground that are pop right back up as soon as we kill the stuff that's standing.
Well, again, I'm not a farmer and a.
Well, and I think.
Horticulturist, but eighty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, and that we're not paying for, right? Yeah, that actually is being paid for by the state.
It does remind me, though, a lot of our water retention areas, we've not controlled trees and shrubs, and so we've got a lot of. Tall, what people think are really trees, but they're kind of shrub. Evasive kind of things, so we don't, I'm not sure if we're managing that, if we have a management plan for some of those areas. And I know I, some of it, I don't know, some of them are ours and some are owned by the people, I guess.
So I guess go.
Getting off topic.
Yeah, so I guess are there, going through those, if there are any other questions, I guess those are my three recommendations. It sounds like council may not want to proceed on all of them or any of them, and I guess at this point, I'm just looking to see if there's any direction on if the council would like. Like us to move forward with any of these, or if they would like me to go back to the drawing board.
Well, I'm okay with addressing the zoning and subdivision.
I am too.
I think that is very important. The other two, not so much.
I support the zoning as well. I do have this. Issue that's in front and center of my mind, and that's the POP facility, and really having a better understanding of. That we all have an understanding of the amount of money that we're going to need to put into that location if we want that to be our city center site. If that was chosen for that. And the POPs committee is going to be putting up a building. I'm hoping that we feel a responsibility to deal with the grading and the dirt work, the significant amount of black dirt that needs to be put in that area is substantial. So.
Yeah.
If we really want it to be that location, I think we owe it to commit to some degree on it. So I'm wondering if any of this money can be used just to buy black dirt.
Or just commit the money, I mean, if we commit the money, then we're, does it have to be under contract or does it have to be committed?
I can look up the exact, as far, I thought it had to be under contract, but I'm not entirely sure.
You know, I think we could figure something out there for, for that, that would obviously help, because I was thinking the same thing earlier when they were presenting, I'm thinking, where are we going to get this money for? It's a good point.
I mean, it's a long-range development plan, and that's, that's fine. But there is an immediate consideration for if this does get built next year. I hope it's not just going to be a gravel surface. That's all. And you'd like some of that dirt work or grading work to hopefully be done at the same time and not done three years later. At least for that specific little area. The stormwater area. That's a significant amount of grading that will take place there. So the numbers may come next meeting or not, but I think they're going to be. Maybe eye-opening, don't you? Or what, what kind of number do you think we're going to see?
I think they could be quite large.
Yep.
I don't know if that's five hundred thousand. I don't know, I really don't. It'll be a big number, I'm sure.
I would certainly support using ARBA money to support the.
I don't know if it qualifies, but.
Oh, because we, basically recommendations came out like twenty twenty-two, that if you got less than ten thousand dollars, anything qualifies, is kind of where it landed, so. And then we did, we got, I mean, we got less, quite, just under a million, so we're kind of allowed to put it where we want.
There's probably other things too to consider, I, that is just that that's top of my mind, but I'm not sure where you're at with like the web page.
That, yeah, that webpage is all being handled under our current contract.
So we have the funds already.
Yeah, yeah, there's. Yeah, yeah, there, there's no money that needs to be put towards the webpage for updating it.
I think the fact that the pops is gonna be a reality. You know, it would make sense to support them and us, you know, and the city to make that area look as nice as possible.
I think your comment about trees is a good one, but there's another initiative, if we have something in the future that we want to do with tree replacement or whatever. But I'm hoping that we get the numbers and maybe that'll lead to a, a good discussion. I won't be here if that happens at that time. But we'd have to move fairly quickly if you need to contract.
Okay, so it, it's not, if, if people would like to move forward with the first recommendation of here, I would, I would just like a motion so that I, I kind of have that memorialized. Um, of, of what, if any of these and uh, for what money is left, I guess I can certainly bring it back as other things arise here in the near future to see what we can do.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the zoning subdivision ordinance update. Uh, realizing that there is forty thousand dollars currently set aside for that uh, study. Um, and then not to exceed an additional forty thousand dollars in ARPA funds.
Yep, so th- this would just be basically ordering staff to start the RFP process, so that way all final numbers, final approval of who's going with would still come back to council.
Okay.
Okay. And that all be done for the end of the year.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'd get that going, so that way we could have that going by the end of the year.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Maggie, seconded by Bruce to uh, go ahead with the zoning subdivision ordinance update. Et cetera, et cetera. Um, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And then hopefully we get some numbers soon from them guys and then. Yeah, okay.
I'll read the next item up for bid. Is that just a FYI?
So I don't have any additional information. No, no formal decision was made. Um, but as you remember, uh, we are going, if we'd like to potentially look at another carrier. Um, we would just need to do, we have a soft deadline uh, to Sourcewell, our current pool, um, that, that we are out looking, but if we do decide to look, it allows them to lift their cap. And you know, looking at our current claim numbers, I don't know if lifting that cap would be good for us.
Correct.
If we were to do, if we were to go out, I would certainly recommend, we certainly maybe look next year after we get hopefully a better year under our belt.
Mm-hmm. No, I agree.
So, I, yeah, we, we had no formal decision at the last meeting and so I didn't know if you guys had any other thoughts or.
No.
Um, just looking for a formal, I guess I don't need a motion if everyone seems to be in agreement of let's stay with Sourcewell then.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought it was done last time.
Yeah, so let's, yeah, absolutely. Um, next item is the approval of, but I got, okay. Is the approval of Adam Brister to the golf board? Do you want to make that motion, Sean?
Sure, I'll make the motion. Let me approve Adam.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Sean, seconded by Rick to approve Adam Brister for the golf board for whatever. Cause he took a term, right?
Uh, but this is a brand new term.
Yeah, so it'll be what, four years?
Four. Three, I think he said, it is.
Three, four. The, the golf course is not the same as everybody else, but I would just say for a standard term.
For his standard term. There you go. Okay. Any questions?
Young guys.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now the rest, oh, the miscellaneous, the population thing, that was interesting.
Yeah, in a nutshell, I talked to the Met Council about that and they ended up finding out they double counted with the information that the demographer overall estimate included, so it looks like we lost population from last year to this year. It really didn't. They just had double counted it for the year prior. So where we need to be, but it was just too big of a jump in last year's estimate, so.
I thought we were cut out of the Met Council.
They still do our estimate for the North County portion of the city, even though we're not included.
Okay.
Why they do that, I do not know, but they do.
Goodness their hearts.
Why they cut it out.
Pre-service, they're mad at us because we're not under their control, that's what.
My, my question is, um, can they give us a corrected two thousand twenty-two?
Well, that's a good question. I did not.
So we have a better.
Yeah, so it looks.
So we don't put an asterisk by it.
So it's, looks like it's going up, not that we dropped and then.
Up again.
I'll ask that question. It does seem to directly correlate with when Tim became police chief.
All good things. Um, next thing is the, for everybody's information is the May joint powers financial information from the school district. And if you got any questions on that.
Uh, I was talking to um, Sandy Lynn, uh, director over there about coming sometime this summer, just to kind of give the council a general update and hopefully kind of make that at least a once a year item. So.
Great.
Go ahead.
Based on these numbers, what do you feel that our fifty percent contribution will be? My, my kind of guess was a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Somewhere between the hundred and thirty and hundred and thirty-five was, was kind of gonna, going to be my guess. I know the last few years especially, our budget numbers have been lower than that. Um, usually they give us a number and then they revise their budget and up it. And so when we talk budget, you'll see that I am recommending we budget more than this current year, even though numbers have trended generally in a good toward, say toward zero, not that they may ever get there, but.
They, they should have the number real soon, shouldn't they?
Yeah, I, I would, I would assume that um, if not here for the July meeting, if certainly by the August meeting, they'll have their books finalized. Cause yeah, their fiscal year ended here, the end of June.
I know there's some differences in some of the categories and I don't know anything about these programs and things, but has there been any changes in the program? I think there's just numbers went from different, must have been different categories because some of them have flipped.
From my understanding, there's been quite a bit of changes in the programming, especially over the last year or so. Um, they kind of changed over on supervisors and who was in charge over there in certain areas. And um, it does seem to have helped significantly. Current, the uh, current site supervisor has been really trying to mix things up um, to get more people in the door. Been looking at various programs that may get people in the door, but make no money at all. Um, that sort of thing to try to at least get us closer to zero.
Um, I did have a question on. How do we do this? Is there a, a way that we can help promote it through? How would we promote it? Through new housing permits or some, and we have no housing permits, but can't we give them a free membership once they apply for a housing permit or something? Try to get more people to.
I would assume there's certain, I would assert, assume that there's certainly something we can do. I know the way the contract's currently written is that we are basically the uh, what do they call them in investing, in the investing world when you just provide the paycheck and someone else runs a business?
Silent partner.
That's the one. Other than the fact that we have three board members, we're kind of a silent partner on all of this. But um, I think if there are ideas we have to try to help market and or get people in the door, I'm certain the school district wouldn't complain about us at least sharing those ideas.
Well, I know we promote it all the time on our newsletter, but I'm just thinking something more direct either when someone applies for a housing permit, that they get a free one-year membership or something to, to get, or something to help, help, because it's to our advantage that it succeeds.
Yeah.
I think a lot of this year too will be different because of the swim, the swim uh, program.
The swim program, yeah.
It's not underneath their purview anymore. It's been moved to a private.
And, and it'll probably take a year or so for that to fully play out, but yes, we, we are no longer direct. The, the powers board is no longer directly running a swim program anymore.
Yes.
And so it is now just renting the facility to a swim program. So in theory, that obviously removes overhead for us, but I, I don't think we'll know for at least a year or two as to how exactly that plays out with facility rentals and um, attendance rentals and that sort of thing.
Now, you're talking about golf simulators and this probably would be well received by the golf group, but if you put a golf simulator in there, would that be a way to generate revenue? And that's a, there's all sorts of things you can do to put in there, but you, to think of things that actually make money. There aren't a lot. You get more people to swim, maybe, but, but golf simulators, obviously, there's market for that. If the golf course can't do it or, you know, don't want to do it.
Okay, and, and the citywide cleanup, that was kind of interesting. One bike, one UTV, one. One.
I don't know how they went through the line exactly.
Yeah.
Good. Oh, good year for the recycling. You had to, obviously, you know, we did three different days for each of those events just from scheduling conflicts, but overall very successful. Um, again, we'll continue to do those cleanups as we have in the past, so.
I wonder if, you know, I saw the tonnage went up like with, or the poundage went up with veterans. I wonder if that is a good thing to have them on a separate day.
I don't know if that was, you, you know, that's kind of been up and down from year to year. I don't, I, I, I don't know what it's contributed to, to be honest with you, but.
Do they pay a fee for that? Do you pay a fee for that?
It's through the grant that pays it. Oh, for paper shit? No, 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 that's free.
The resident's still paid.
You could bring like a hard drive and other electronic devices. They will do that for an additional fee, but the papers include it, if you're a resident of the city.
And they do it on their own? Uh, the grant pays for them?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, any other items anybody wants to discuss, otherwise it'll go around the horn? Rick?
Nope.
Bruce?
Nope.
I don't have anything. Sean?
I do not.
Maggie?
No.
Uh, br- bring up something real quick. I know Bruce mentioned he won't be at the next meeting. Obviously, stuff can happen, but is everybody planning on being at the August nineteen meeting? And I just wonder if we'd, for our first budget meeting, if we'd rather have everybody there. And so if everyone's planning to be there, uh, while I'd leave everything else for the rest of the calendar where it's at, maybe just push that first meeting back two weeks so that everybody could be there for that first meeting. I'd, it tends to be the meeting, I'm hoping, that has more of the big picture items that kind of shape the whole course of conversation for the fall.
Yeah.
That'd be my preference, but if someone's, if someone else is gonna be gone, then we might as well just have it on August second or whatever, fourth.
Fifth.
Fifth, whatever the date is.
I'd find I'm being here.
I'll be here. For the nineteenth.
Okay, then yeah, if, if you guys are all right with it, we'll just have that first budget meeting on the nineteenth.
Okay.
And still get you guys your packets two or three weeks early, so that you've got plenty of time to look at them and shoot any questions my way before the meeting if you have.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good.
Um, other than that, I know Rick asked a question today about the community center and um, board members and that sort of thing. So under the revision of the uh, use contract, and I'm pointing that way, I think it's actually that way. Um, two thousand eleven, um, the city council was able, when we got the DUCS grant in two thousand eleven for improvements over there, we added into our use contract that the city council um, has the ability to put one board member, full board member onto that board with all voting rights and whatnot that go along with it. It does not say it has to be a city council member. So similar to the joint powers board, if city council can appoint anybody they want to sit on that board. And I know, um, I think Rick has sat on it for a little while, haven't you, Rick? And if, if for some reason the council.
Six years.
Yeah, for some reason Rick decided he didn't want to sit on that board anymore, the council wanted to appoint someone else. It doesn't have to be a council member, it could be anybody.
Okay.
So that's more just information for you guys to mull around in your brains and the other board to appoint people to.
Okay. All right. That's it?
Uh, yeah, that's all I got. Oh, uh, August is coming up, so you'll be getting my annual review stuff. Probably in the next few days to look over. That is all I got.
Okay, yeah.
Nothing more?
Um, our new cameras for the squad cars will be installed tomorrow. We're hoping to get it done in a day, maybe day and a half to two days depending, so all, all the squad cars will have the, the upgraded cameras that we went through, so that'll be good. And I'll have uh, I'll have some more. I'll put, put things out, but one of our officers will be getting a, a life-saving award tomorrow at Scott County. So um, it'll be actually to Officer Walton and then Officer Eastman, who's no longer with us, but they both were involved in a, they helped the sheriff's office just outside of town here with uh, some CPR on an individual who had went down, so.
Thanks.
That'll be kind of nice and I'll share some photos in the weekly update, so put a post out there so you guys can see that, so. That'll be tomorrow morning at nine. All I have.
Man? Okay, take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second? I'll second it. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Nobody wants to leave.